Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody told me there's crosses. You see?
I had my phone in my pocket.
I don't know. That's what I can act like. So there's crosses this morning on either roof or yard. I didn't even look. I think they're all stuck too long. There you go. Yeah. Bank over there. Mm-hmm. Yeah. 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 Right.
You say so.
Who? Call me, indoor.
Sim?
Here.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Same pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on April 9th, 2019.
Second.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes. Okay, then the minutes for the April 18th meeting.
Make a motion to accept them.
Second.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Okay, game the bills. As soon as moved, we pay the bills.
Second. Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Reminder, the MCTA was canceled for tomorrow night for Perry and Clay. It will be hosted at Harrison Township. Job and Family Services, 941 Quarterly, along with the Schedule B since we're a semi-weekly 941 reporting, has been submitted for the first quarter. State and School Districts courtesy withholdings. WRCG was held May 6th at Jackson Township. As the treasurer, I presented the treasury dollar amount for the WRCG minutes. German Township trustee questioned the difference in dollar amounts since what was reported in '16 wasn't...
It's about a thousand dollars or more.
Yeah, it was off.
Which, which actually, you're the first one, they said, that's ever brought to books and records.
Basically, at the meeting, yeah.
It's just...
So due to missing bank statements and the check register not being balanced, I reviewed what information I had, contacted Huntington Bank for missing statements. I was able to balance and forward the account information to the active WRCG members and the attorney as well.
And it turned out that the thousand dollars discrepancy was some bills that had been paid and...
But not entered.
And not, yes, and not entered and so forth. Correct, yes.
Kate and I attended the annual meeting of the county engineers on April 24th. Paul Bruner presented the gas tax increase revenue for '18 and '19, or gas tax increase revenue, and '18 and '19 bridge construction repairs. I have the annual report, if anybody would like to look at that after the meeting today. It's amazing what the cost of bridges. Third Street Bridge, I think they're calculating $20 million to replace that.
Is that the bridge downtown?
Yeah. The Fiscal Integrity Act that I, for the UAN webinar on April 17th, I reported that. I think that puts me up close to about 50 hours. I only need 12. I at least take the classes. I contacted Ford Credit for a lien release for the 2016 police cruiser. Received the release and I went to the Title Bureau and obtained a title and sent that off to Purzo. Also for the newest cruiser, I received the application for dealer assignment, signed the paperwork, and we have received a title for the US Cruiser that we'll be getting for soon. I think it's still at Katy Roads getting fitted. I emailed the Cemetery Rules and Regulations of Department of Commerce, Division of Real Estate and Professional Licensing, and reviewed the list of employees to sell interment rights for all active cemeteries. No changes in list of employees. You have to do that yearly. The Board of County Commissioners sent a resolution authorizing the county engineers to post emergency vehicle weight limits for the Heda Road Bridge. I emailed this to Chief Fletcher and Keith Kaiser. Chief Fletcher responded, this was the first he had heard about the limits. I had concern about fire trucks. I don't know what their weight limit is, but I was glad I emailed it and they both forwarded a thank you back, letting them know that information. Received a legal notice from the Montgomery County Board of County Commissioners, I should say, for authorizing the county... Never mind. Start over here.
That was for the bridge.
Rewind. Received legal notice from Montgomery, Solon Water, for the Clayton Road Group Drainage Project scheduled for May 30th. Project owners are requesting assistance for the planning, design, construction, and certification of a drainage improvement project consisting of open ditches and/or tile mains. Twenty-one people have land in the watershed with a total of 62 acres. Again, here is the legal notice, if anybody would like to see that after the meeting, or you could attend the meeting at Solon Water on May 30th. The forfeiture system for the e-share was not available on April 26th due to a scheduled system maintenance, and May 7th due to scheduled system outage. I reported that to Chief Littleton for his knowledge of... That's something where I get the emails, but he does the reporting. The ICS statements were always emailed to me January of '19. I don't know what happened, but I stopped getting the statements by email. I contacted LCNB Bank to set up statements again and have received them this last month with no issue. The update on the county sales tax resolution that the board adopted on September 11th. I reached out to John Morris, the trustee for Miami Township. August 9th of '18, Road Supervisor Mike Kraft and I attended a meeting at Harrison Township regarding the county sales tax that was enacted on June 26th, 2018. John Morris, trustee of Miami Township, had grouped all of his townships together to pass a resolution to see if we could get some of that $20 million in sales tax that this would generate. When I reached out to John, because I hadn't heard anything, this was his response by his email. Officially, the county never responded to the township's request by resolution for restitution of past funding and/or creating new opportunities for funding after passing their sales tax increase, resulting in a new windfall of funds for them on the backs of our residents. You can call it a pocket veto. No response equals no action. At the meeting of the Montgomery County Township Association, he directly asked County Commissioner Carolyn Rice about the request of the township, and in an open forum, she replied, "That is not going to happen." So that is the only official response that our townships have heard. The county has no interest in helping the townships or sharing any of its revenue.
Which was about $19 million, I think.
I think about $20.
Yeah, somewhere, 19 to 20 million.
So...
Because I made some phone calls recently about that also. Got the same kind of return message, basically.
Open enrollment for medical was made first through the tent. There was no meeting this year for the affiliates at the county building. This year will be a passive enrollment. Only employees wishing to make change in their medical will need to complete their enrollment forms. No employees needing to change, so... This is the first year in my 12 years that I've never had to go to the county building for medical as being an affiliate, so... One thing we need to look at if you want to pass a resolution. Last July, when we renewed, we started with the HSA and the employer contributed $250. We do have Officer Biscardi as a new employee, full-time. Can we pass a resolution so that could read as a one-time HSA contribution for full-time employees receiving health care of $250? We did it for the other employees.
Second.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
So I'll call the HSA plan and have them deposit that in his account. Received $41,425.85 for the insurance for the 2016 police cruiser. That was deposited into the police fund 2081. The copier that we are using, we're currently paying $260 a month. One payment to US Bank for $171, ProSource, our service repairs, of $88. Currently, it prints off 22 pages per minute, 2,800 copies a month, or 8,400 copies a quarter. And then if you go over the 8,400, you do have an overage charge of .018630. ProSource reached out to me with some, with a new copier. I told them I couldn't do anything until we had our meeting. Since then, they revised the pricing again. So our, we have a black and white copier. It will scan in color, but it will not print in color. Or we can get a color, color copier. The overage rate is less, so we need to decide if we want a black and white copier or a color copier. The savings for...
Does that include your cartridges and stuff?
Yes.
And what did you say? Scanning now it will...
It was scan code.
You know, scan color, is that what you said?
Before, we always just had a black and white. And if we had something highlighted in color, if we scan it and email it to another entity or someone else, they can print it in color. But if they had something highlighted, sent it to us, it would not print in color. So our, for the color copier, I talked to the police department and we thought that would be our best, because we do have some things that we wish we...
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have that. So with that, it would be $236.18 a month. It's a savings of what we're paying now, or $23.90. We'd still have 2,800 copies, 8,400 quarterly, 500 copies of color, so that'd make 1,500 quarterly, and our overage rate is less than what we're paying now. I guess I'm kind of, I'm going more towards the color copier if you trustees...
I make a motion that we do the color copy.
Second.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Also, the VFW Memorial Day Services approved the $100 donation to the VFW of Brookville and the American Legion in New Lebanon.
So moved.
Second.
Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
John Meneer, the Community Outreach and Education Manager with the Montgomery County Environmental Services, has arranged a trip to the Rumpke Materials Recovery Facility in Landville in Cincinnati on May 21st and June 28th. Kate and I have already RSVP'd for the May 21st date, so the office will be closed that day, if any of you trustees would like to go.
I thought that was either for date. I didn't think the date was, I thought it was May 21st or June 28th.
Oh, I don't know. Anyway, I RSVP'd. Okay, so maybe it's...
It's one or the other.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Well, I put in May 21st, so we'll see.
Yeah, seeing what everybody's schedule worked out best, I think.
So either of you trustees want to go, or either of you, let us know. I've been also considering a recycling class to be held at the township. The date has not yet been determined. Perry has led the WRCG in recycling tonnage the past several years.
So something more could you put on? Or he would put it on?
I would put it on, yeah. I could reach out to John Meneer and John Whitman.
Yeah, I knew they would come out and say...
Yeah. I've attended some other classes not associated with the township on recycling, and that has sparked an interest, because there's a lot of things I recycle that I have learned is not recyclable.
Yes.
So I think residents would find that interesting.
I think also, if you want to do the trip to Cincinnati, you have to let them know by this Thursday.
Sixteenth.
Yeah.
Which, you said about the recycling, Perry has all these for a long time left. There may have been a couple of times they weren't, weren't the top recycling, but over most of the years, they have, they have been the top.
Something I'd like to go into a little bit further here is from our April 18th special meeting. There were some questions asked from the visitors about the executive session and if it was part of the agenda for that meeting. We stated there was no agenda. The resident came back and said, "Well, there's one on the door." A trustee came back and said, "That was a meeting notice, not an agenda." And a lady stated that it should be in your meeting notice what you should have in your executive session. We stated that is incorrect and talked to the prosecutor. She asked who the prosecutor was, and we gave her Nathaniel Peterson's name. The other day, I emailed Nathaniel and asking him if anybody contacted him regarding executive sessions being on the agenda or the meeting notice. And this was his response, and I'll read. "It is not required that the township place on the meeting notice that the trustees will be going into executive session. While it is not forbidden either, it would be his advice that you do not put anything about executive sessions on the meeting notices. Going into an executive session is a privilege of the Board of Trustees, and the Board can go into executive session at any time for a legitimate purpose. The Board does not need to give advance warning of the certainty of the possibility of going into executive session. My advice would be to not announce it ahead of time. Should the Board go into executive session, the meetings do not need to reflect what specifically was..."
Minutes.
The minutes do not need to reflect what specifically was discussed within the session. The minutes do not need to state what the purpose allowing for the executive session was. I also did state to Nathaniel that I did, last year in '18, put on the meeting notice that the Board would probably go into executive session on this one specific meeting. And I was told that I had to remove that by a past trustee. So Nathaniel addressed that as well and said, "I do not think this past trustee's reaction was appropriate, and I do not think the wording can't put on that notice. I believe it is optional. However, as stated above, I would advise not putting anything about executive session on the meeting notice." So I have the email, if anybody has a question about that. That was at our special meeting. Somebody... Couple, I guess, people said that, saying it had to be on the notice. So I have also completed a records retention schedule I'll need to send to the Ohio History Connection Local Government Records Program. After signing the form, it will be forwarded to the Auditor of State. Trustees will senior pact it, detached ORC 149.42 Township Records Commission. So I am the Township Records Commission. I will have to have a meeting once a year, what we would like to dispose of, so if I can have a resolution passing that, I'll get that sent off to the Ohio...
So moved. Second.
Price? Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Is there any questions for the residents? Yes, sir.
On the Rumpke recycling class?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a pamphlet or something available to tell us? Because I spent five years putting my recyclables in bags and putting it in the can and putting it to the curb, and one day about a year ago, the trash guy says, "We won't take it if it's in a bag."
Exactly.
We just heard that at the RW, WRCG meeting the other night, and Rumpke was there, and they said they do not want the recyclables in bags.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, which, yeah, I'm just saying it so everybody knows, if anybody hears of somebody, they do not want that, so...
Well, he told me if they found a bag, they just took it out and put it in the trash bin.
That's what they told us, yeah.
But is there a pamphlet? Because I may be recycling things unknowingly that I shouldn't.
I am actually saving everything, so you'll see everything I eat, because that is going to be part of the demonstration.
You can also go online and pull this on it.
What did they tell us about the plastic, the...
It has to have a neck on it.
Yes, a neck, like a bottle. This type of bottle, if it has a neck, it is recyclable.
But you have to take the top off.
Well, I'm just saying that, and that was...
You don't have to, you can...
That was the way I explained it. If it is a neck on it, it is recyclable.
But like butter, plastic butter containers, yogurt containers, they are not recyclable.
Well, I'm pretty much on the next of food in most cases.
Pardon?
My general bill rule is if it had food on it, it goes in the trash.
No.
No. Pass one. Say again what you said, please.
Butter containers and yogurt containers are not recyclable.
Well, because they're open top?
No, because I can't believe it's not butter.
It has to have a neck. Like a milk jug, it has a neck.
Yeah, they said that's the easy way to, you know, what they explained it as, so...
Okay. Do you want me to talk about your two issues here? Ready for the road cemetery?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and continue on for a couple of things here. The pre-construction meeting for the crack seal program was held May 6th. Amity Road between Sulphur Springs and Crawford Tom's Run Road. Their tentative start date was yesterday. Their completion date is August 2nd. The contractor will start on the west side of the project with the township and in between the county roads, so they should be starting. Have you seen about the...
They said they're going to start west and work their way east. We'll see them first.
And then the Keener Road Improvements Project Schedule by the June meeting. June 6th, there'll be a bid opening. Our June trustees meeting, new trustees will have to sign and approve, and it'll be awarded. You'll see it in the Brookville Star, the 22nd of May and the 29th of May being published, and that invoice will be sent here. The closeout date is October 31st. I would like to see a project that closes when it should. I have not, ever. So I would love to see that closed out when it should be. It opens up with the year end and everything, with the payments. By the time you get your, and you don't actually receive the money, it's just kind of the money flows in and out. It's there, but it's not there. I get a piece of paper, and that, so I hope that can be completed. That's Keener Road.
And then we also got Cheap Road on the, next year. Yeah, on the, well, the application there. That's what I was trying to come up with, the application.
Is there anything else for me? Nope.
Cemetery's been the challenge as far as cemeteries, trying to get them ready for Memorial Day, tiptoeing around, trying to mow, trim, anything we do in there. Level seed of grigs. We have sprayed Pecammon, Pluton Hill, and Eversol for weeds. Trim trees on fence lines and chipped. And this, this week and next, we'll get ready for next weekend, Memorial Day, so hopefully weather cooperates. Then on the roads, we jet rattled a tile on Amity Road with no prevail. It actually was out farther into the fields, so... It actually was out farther into the fields. The landowner took care of that, couldn't get through whatever was out there. Tomorrow, we'll jet route a corveled on Air Hill and Sheep. Start mowing roads, we're only mowing roadside ditch only. Can't reach back, it's too soft getting in the ditches, so. When they can pass along the inside of the road ditch. Clean corveled on Amity and we put new tires on the two thousand two one ton. We got a cut on one of the front, couldn't patch it, so it's about time to put new tires on them, so. Other than that, once we be on Memorial Day, we'll switch our gears to the roadside, start up on Keener Road.
Burials have been a challenge too, this one.
They have.
They have.
They have.
It is a good time to bring up new business. I canvassed a lot of the townships in this area. And I see where we're really kind of short in a couple areas. I want to make a motion that we raise Doug Johnson's pay to eighteen twenty-five in Allen. To make it consistent with the surrounding communities.
What did you, I didn't catch up.
I'm sorry.
What was the price?
Did you have something else you can say about that?
No, I'm done with that.
Okay, well, I'll second it.
Price?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Okay, next thing I have is we had a contract proposal for replacing the lighting in this building, all this building and the garage. I did some research and talked to several other contractors and I, and we will make a savings of approximately, well, a little bit over twenty-five hundred dollars by going with C D S C L L C. And it's a, to remove and relamp the fixtures in this building and the garage is a total of seventy-five hundred dollars. I'd like to make a motion that we approve that.
And just to add on what Ron's saying, some of you were here maybe at the identity theft meeting, we couldn't get the lights on in this room. Chief Littleton's had a problem in his office, the restroom, sometimes you can't get the lights on in there. The entryway, I mean, I don't know, the lights, the ballisters, so.
And one other thing too, we are going to be eligible for a rebate from D P N L because we are going to LED lighting and there's savings there. So we'll get some, some of that money back for them, from them also, so.
And that's to replace all of these, right?
Right.
All of the existing lights?
Yeah, if it's a light bulb, it's golden. That's a motion.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Also, I went to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission meeting. And I had the opportunity to talk to two other people about grants that we may be able to get for communications. We're looking at a pretty good chunk of change to get spectrum in this area. So they haven't gotten back with me yet, but they are investigating whether or not we can get some kind of grant to help us on that money. I've got Tuana working on that as we speak. You know, the mills of government grind very slowly. So even if we get it after we install this thing, if it's approved and we do that, we still will be able to get some kind of a rebate back as far as the grant is concerned. That's all I got.
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of rural throughout the whole U.S. Money's put up for better internet provider stuff, but like you said.
And this will be a benefit to the community. If we ever get this centrally located as far as spectrum concerned, it's only a matter of time that they're going to extend this throughout the community, so that's a good thing.
Okay, is there anything else with the rural?
Good. Okay, we'll go with zoning.
Okay, for the trash, I sent a letter to five sixty-five Johnsville Brookville Road. They had trash in their recycled bin, that's not allowed. Zoning, there's a B Z A, the B Z A meeting held on Thursday, May second was for the Dolph Family Farms Lot Split for the decision. That was tabled at the meeting on March seventh. The case was approved. There's an, I gave the approval letter to Dale in the zoning text that says the trustees are supposed to get a copy of that. There's a zoning commission meeting scheduled for May sixteenth at seven P.M. The zoning commission board has an opening for an alternate member per the O R C five one nine point oh four. The township trustees can appoint up to two alternates. On April twenty-third, I got a call from a resident who was questioning if one five zero one one Brookville Piermont Road in Perry Township, the resident called, asked about the property. She stated that the garage falls in weekly and it's partly on her property. She's afraid to mow her backyard because she's afraid the garage will collapse and fall on her. She asked if the property can be condemned. I contacted Tuana Jones at the county and she said the county might be able to assist with demolition if the township is willing to condemn the property and take it through the nuisance abatement process. So I don't know if you want me to follow up with that. May second, I sent a letter to one oh five four five Amity Road to mow. They have till May sixteenth to mow, they have not mowed yet. May seventh, I sent a courtesy letter to one oh eight two one Old Dayton Road to mow. They have mowed. And May eighth, I sent a courtesy letter to one five eight zero zero Little Richmond to mow and remove the junk and debris. They have two weeks from May eighth to do that. And May eighth, I issued a permit for an accessory building at one three oh seven one Old Dayton Road. And yesterday I issued a permit for a room addition at thirty-nine fifty-four Johnsville Brookville Road.
Are we, kind of, are we, because I noticed a lot of yards, I know that they're raining stuff. Are you, when are you going out again?
I went out today and these, these ones that I sent letters to, I give them two weeks to follow up on because I know it's been raining a lot. And I've got two more letters to go out tomorrow.
The Protecting Your Identity Class that was held here was a success. They have information pamphlets that are up here. They came in just after that class, so if you'd like to have some, please pick those up. We've had one or two, Rhonda, that came in, after they came in, had to pick the information up. Looking at August still for a fishing derby date. I know some residents have spoken with me about assisting with that. And I also have some officers that love to fish, so they just need to get together and pair you guys up and run with it. October, we're still looking for, I'm sorry, October, early November, still looking at doing like a archery safety day and some target practice out off of North Diamond Mill there. Over the last thirty days, all of our officers have requalified with the use of the taser and requalified for their weapons that they have to do once a year. As Rhonda spoke a little bit about the new cruiser, it is at K E Rose. I spoke with Gary on Friday. The only holdup is, is waiting for some of the equipment to come in. Some of it was backordered. Right now it's showing that all the equipment will be at K E Rose the last week of this month. And he's looking at the first week of June for completion. Ron, you kind of stole my thunder there with the spectrum internet. We're still having some issues and I know Rhonda was, was fighting the internet there for about a day or so. So that's still giving us some issues. I got three applicants that are in the hiring process. One of them needs an interview, the other two have moved on to our background phase. We've had one applicant that has withdrew his application. Calls for services that the township has taken reports on over the last thirty days. Two calls for domestic violence, we had a neighbor dispute. Six traffic crashes. Some of those crashes were with deer. Can't help, you know, deer jumps out in front of you at the last minute. Some of them had to deal with speeds or not paying attention at stop signs. We've taken five sex offenses, reports on those. Those five, three or four came in within the last week. One O V I, two trespassing complaints, made one arrest off of a warrant. Took a fraud slash scam call, a threats complaint, one drugs complaint. Ended up locating four grams of crystal meth on the side of the road. Lady down here on Little Richmond had called. She went up to her mailbox, took it to mail, noticed a glove. She went to pick up the glove, there was a needle and a baggie of a white substance. So she called, I went down and retrieved that and ended up weighing it and everything and it was crystal meth. But somebody had lost out of a work glove. I'm not sure if they stopped there and, you know, it fell out of the car. But, you know, it is out here and it does travel around.
You miss me a glove deal.
I don't need it when it's always up.
It's, it's black and green, it's the right side, you know, right-handed, so if you got a black and green glove and you've only got the left, come talk with me. We'll make sure we get you your property back. The thieves are out and about. We had a theft, at least one theft complaint from a few nights ago. O V I Task Force contract that we had with the city of Dayton and Montgomery County. The contract was updated. The old contract was that Perry Township would receive a thousand dollars to have officers participate in this program. And that's a year. Perry Township, for the longest time that I was informed of, was not participating in this task force for some odd reason. So after speaking with the city of Dayton and Montgomery County, I was able to negotiate the contract back to the five thousand dollars for the year to how our officers participate in that program on a regular basis. I know they're excited about going out working O V I checkpoints and coming out here and solely focusing on getting O V Is off the road. And that's either alcohol and/or drug impairment. Speaking of other task force or other traffic safety, Perry Township's participating in the Click It or Take It. That runs May twentieth through June second. So you should always wear your seatbelt, but between those dates, make sure you wear them because enforcement all throughout the state is going to be through the, through the ceiling on those. Another one that we're participating in, it'll be in August, it's the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over campaign. And that starts August the sixteenth and will run through September the second.
That's great about that, thank you for doing that.
I do have one other thing in new business. We have been inundated lately with requests for public information. And that's totally okay for the event, but we've had about eighty requests for public information. A lot of it is redundant and repetitive and it's been happening. And it's, it's really stealing a lot of the time that we have to devote to running the township. So I've been talking to the prosecutor and been going through some possibilities that we may, and we haven't made a decision about any of this, but I want to bring it to everybody's attention. Because of the huge volume of public records requests that we've had, I think maybe we should consider hiring an outside entity to handle nothing but them. And if we could do that, and I'm still looking into the legalities of it, we could hire somebody with, say, at twenty dollars an hour. Bring them in for a minimum of one hour. And then we could turn that expense, because it's legal to do that, we could turn that expense back to the requester of the information. And like I said, I'm still looking into that. I've got pros and cons to that. But the thing is, it's taken away so much time from our fiscal officer and the people that work in this building that we need to do something. We're in a situation right now where it's, it's really costing the community.
Cheats are losing, so we're not getting, you know.
Right, you know, it's just, it's terrible, but that all of us, all of the good people have to support a bunch of redundant things that are coming in. And they're just repetitive and it's, it's really silly to do that. So I'm going to open that up for any discussion anybody might have because I really think that in order to do our job properly, we need all the help we can get. And right now, we need an outside entity to come in and do that on a per cost basis. If they come in for a minimum of one hour and they process six of those requests and we turn that, and it takes them four hours to do it, we turn that right back around on the Requester and let them pick up the, the charge for it. That way, all the people in the community, there's a lot that can be accomplished right here. You can ask questions, we can cover a whole lot of that stuff right here in the meetings. And to tie up computer time, personnel time and all of that, it's just really gotten ridiculous. We had eighty requests a month. Most of them came from two or three people. And for some reason, there are a few people that just want to eviscerate everybody that works in this building. And I think that's a shame. And it's, it's gotten to the point where it's almost harassment. So I just want to put that out there for discussion. Yeah, Doug?
Ron, tough question. These are Freedom of Information Act requests.
Basic.
For you?
Yeah.
And billing back, if you have somebody, it sounds, I'm just a guy sitting on a street corner here, but I'm hearing that it sounds like it's focused in two or three people. They're going after something is what I would draw from that. Would it be possible to send out a letter to them and say, in the future, due to the cost involved with gathering all this data in the future, you would bill at twenty dollars per hour?
We can't do that, we can only charge for the expense that it costs us. That's why it would have to be an outside entity that we hired to do- That's why it would have to be an outside entity that we hired to do that, if there was some way to stop it. Or, you know, there's nothing wrong with a request for public records. That's a citizen's right, and it's our obligation to answer those in a timely manner. But when we've got other things going on, we've got a lot of activity going on right now. We've got brand-new, best police department in southwest Ohio right now, and getting better all the time, and it's not because everybody's better than that.
Come on, now, give us some credit.
And it's not because we're sitting back doing nothing, you know? We are diligently putting forth effort to get things better in our community, to return them back, you know, I want to make, I want to get a shirt that says, "Make Perry Township Great Again," you know, that's the kind of thing. And I think it's a possibility that it could be great, but the way things are going right now, our hands are tied up in tinkering around with little dumb stuff that's already been answered in the minutes and in the DVDs, and it's right there, but then we get a request for the very same information that's available, but we have to answer that according to law. And it's just taking a huge amount of time, a lot of consideration, a lot of activity, just to fulfill that, and it's costing everybody in our community money just to satisfy whatever somebody's wanting to do. I don't even know what it is, I don't even know what they're after, because it's all been covered, one, two, and three, right down to the line. I'm totally astonished how some people can trip over things behind them.
I agree that we just table it and then we just discuss it.
I need to agree that.
Some people are just troublesome.
Yes.
Poor souls, they may not work easy.
I go back to my question, though, you know, is there any way to notify them that in the future, FOIA requests will be, will cost money?
They would probably just want a public records request on the requests that we made, so, no, it doesn't look like it's a feasible thing. When you're dealing with unreasonable, there's no reasoning about it.
I understand. If you put them on notice, then you have recourse at the point in time that they've used the privilege again.
You can't do that.
Can't do that.
Well, and you can't notify them on a charge if they haven't hired somebody, you have to have somebody hired separately for that position to be able to charge for it.
Well, you don't, I'm not trying to nitpick with you, but what I'm saying is, you know, if the volume of reports continues, then put them on notice that there may be a charge for that many requests.
Well, it would have to be an outside, I have something here that's, I think it's important to turn. This is from the Ohio Attorney General, and it's recognition of a completion award to certify that I have completed successfully the Sunshine Law Training regarding Ohio Public Records and Open Meetings laws as required by Section 149.43 and 109.43 of the Highway Revise Code, and it's signed by Dave Yost, who is the Ohio Attorney General, and so, you know, from now on, when it comes up to, when it's time to talk about the Sunshine Law, get prepared to know what you're talking about or shut up. I don't take this very lightly.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, kind of disgusting when we have people argue that we don't know the law or whatever, well, I think we've been to classes and we do, you know, so, yeah.
Let me pick the scab off again. If you don't tell them that it's coming, and you just throw it down on them, they're going to react more aggressively than if you give them some warning.
But if you get an outside entity, they can do whatever they want, they can request eighty a day, they're just going to pay for eighty a day.
I understand, I'm trying to say there's got to be some way to let them know that they exceeded their quota of freebies.
It's by law, it's, they can request whatever they want, but it's also up to us to hire an outside entity and charge back for every one of those requests. I've got pieces of paper, one piece of paper with six and eight requests on it, and they're redundant, one right after another, stupid, just stupid. Somebody's just trying to kill everybody that works in this building through a bunch of crap, is what we're asking. What's in it?
Wouldn't they already be aware, once you get to the point where somebody decides to make a resolution, or make a motion, and the resolution passes, it's going to be on the DVD, it's going to be in the minutes?
Well, we don't have to notify every...
So, but I mean, the information will be readily available to the public that that change has occurred?
Well, it will be, everything will be notified, everybody will be notified, there will be a poster in there that tells exactly what's going on, and it'll be in the minutes, and it'll be in the DVD of the meeting, and, you know, if people that are that concerned about what's going on in any public records request, they should be at the meeting to hear it. If they're not, then the truth is, they're just making us extra work because of something, who knows why.
So how will the billing and that occur on that?
That's something.
Before or after their request? Because otherwise, you're going to have all this information going out to them.
It would be prepaid.
I think you can do that now.
Yeah, it would have to...
Call somebody to prepay.
It would be prepaid because...
Yes, because otherwise, that cost is still going to be associated with Perry Township, yeah.
Right, it would be prepaid, you know, if, say you've got to pay ten dollars for each request, and you have eight requests, that's eighty bucks upfront.
Okay.
We'll get it to you within a reasonable amount of time.
But there again, we are still looking into this.
But yeah, we're kicking this around, I've talked to Nathaniel several times about it, I've gone through the Sunshine Law, it looks like an open door so far, so.
And it says unreasonable time, what's that? You know, I might call reasonable a year, somebody else might call it two days.
Right.
You know, but it's pretty open-ended in the Sunshine Law.
But when you get eighty a month, how can you do anything that appears to be a reasonable time?
That's time-consuming.
It's just tying up everything in here, there are people out here that want to eviscerate everyone that works out of this building.
And by law, certain things we have to redact, certain things.
Right.
That's the law. We can't put police officer information and things out there, that's the law, so.
I got to answer your question real quick.
Sure.
Mr. Christian, by any chance, is one of those letters going to 11975 AMIT?
Hmm, no.
Okay, because you need an airboat to get around my front yard right now.
You don't have floaters? I, no, I don't, I mean, I hung up some line more in the last couple of weeks, more than I've ever hung up all year long, I mean, it is incredible, I know.
So you're telling on yourself?
On the street, you go by my house, and you see my yard.
He's trying to save you the postage.
We are Everglades North.
I got the same problem, Dave, I took my tractor out there, just about stuck it.
I just happened to go by yours one day, and I happened to notice the tracks there, I can see it got really muddy.
I tried to mow.
Well, I know, I know, I know.
And my neighbor's been very nice. But I've got a two-hundred-foot wide stream when it gets.
Oh, I know.
And that goes right out, I can't get in here.
Does our, do you have the fire chief have anything you want to?
No, we did have our open house, we had probably two to three hundred people show up, a lot of positive feedback from the, from the community, I think some of them were Perry Township residents as well, they came in, we did face painting for the kids, we did donuts, we offered a lot of safety information to the general public. So, in two hours, like I said, we probably had seen two to three hundred people come through.
Good deal. Anything else?
May I speak?
Kristin?
May I speak?
Oh, I just, is she ready to turn in? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll come up there.
Can I have a copy of that after you've done?
Of my stuff?
No, are you reading off of something?
Yeah, that I typed.
Yeah, can I have a copy afterwards, to attach with the minutes?
Sure, there's part of it handwritten, part of it typed, part of it chicken scratch, and my son colored the front page. He knows a lot.
Give your name and address, please.
My name is Kristin Spitznagle, and I can't give mine address. I live with an officer, so I can't give mine. Tonight, I come to you as a few different people, no, I don't have split personalities, as much as you'd like to say that anyway. First, as the former president of council of Morristown, and former employee or employer of Chief Littleton. And yes, former, I'll make that very clear. I would like to set the record straight. Chief Littleton was hired as a full-time chief and maintained that role until a few things changed in Morristown, none of which were at any fault of the chief. It was changed mostly due to Blue Line Solutions contract falling through. Blue Line ended up being a scam. So the village no longer had the funding for a full-time officer. Chief was then moved to a part-time position, still listed as the chief, even though he still worked full-time hours for us, not paid for them, and worked for another department, so was still working more than full-time hours, even though he was listed now as a part-time employee. He still remained the chief of police. So the allegations of him never having a full-time job or a full-time chief position are false. Now back to the company that helped Morristown go broke, Blue Line Solutions. A camera ticketing company was brought before council and very deceptively represented by an officer named Robert Peters. Robert Peters ended up being fired from Morristown for falsifying his time card. Later, he was brought under investigation for several reasons, due to it still being an ongoing investigation, I cannot speak on that matter. Robert Peters goes by many aliases, one of them being Brock Rieger. I know this for a fact, I have emails from him as his alias, because he was trying to help me fire Chief Littleton when he first came to work for us. Now, when an inquiry was placed on who did a records request on Littleton and Enen, the only person in the last twelve months to do a records request was Brock Rieger. Robert Peters leads nothing but a path of destruction and uses anyone and anything that he can to do his dirty work and ruin others. Now, my second personality, I come to you as the girlfriend of a police officer. So those of you that don't watch your significant other strap a gun to their leg and a bulletproof vest to their chest to go to work, let me explain that feeling. You kiss them goodbye every time they leave for work, for a split second during that kiss, you close your eyes and pray it is not the last one. You worry all day and night that they come home from every shift. There has already been forty-two line-of-duty deaths this year in the United States. Now, with that being said, I am absolutely appalled that officers have assisted in the endless and senseless witch hunt. As a fellow officer, whether you're a Perry Township officer, a neighboring township officer, or just any other officer, period, shame on you for not standing beside your fellow brother in blue. And shame on you for not coming to your fellow officer if there was a concern or an issue and not addressing it face-to-face, man-to-man, and most importantly, brother-to-brother and officer-to-officer. Now, thirdly, I come to you as a mother, and at this point, the witch hunt has summoned the mama bear in me. An officer is expected to run into an active shooter situation, a crazy person on drugs, domestic violence situation, they're expected to pull people over with no idea of what or who at the other end of that car. You, as Perry Township, expect Chief Littleson, also known to me as a father, son, brother, and an amazing boyfriend, to protect and serve, if asked of him, to lay down his life and to serve your community. He walks out the front door of our home every morning to prepare to do so if any of that is called upon him with no questions asked. Between the two of us, we have ten, yes, ten kids, and three grandchildren, and with no regard for the safety of our family, our address is posted all over social media. Should it have been redacted, absolutely, and according to the ORC 149.43, it legally should have been. But since it wasn't, it should have been blacked out by the person posting it all over social media. How can you ask a man to leave his family at home and protect and serve you when you are putting his family in harm's way? I am by no means saying you have no rights to public records. Go for it, request away, post it wherever you would like. Chief's life is an open book, mistakes and all. Considering the type of toilet paper that we use is about the only thing that hasn't been posted, and it's Sherman, the red package, in case anyone would like to know. Now, here is the mama bear part. I will make this promise, anyone, and I mean anyone, whether it is a department, whether it is the State Highway Patrol, whether it is another officer or a civilian, I will hold anyone responsible with my team of attorneys if there is any harm in any way brought to my family due to the release of our address. Post any public record that you would like, find them, look for them, ask for them, request them. All I'm asking is that you have some compassion for the chief that kisses his family goodbye every day to come and protect you and your family. Now, lastly, why? Why has this continued? What has Chief Littleton done so wrong as your interim chief or as your permanent chief? To the majority of Perry Township, I would like to thank you for your love and support, you guys are amazing. But to the select few that had continued this, and I ask is why? You say it's because you care so much for Perry Township, that you are so concerned that you have taken hours upon hours of your time and others trying to find anything you can to drag this man's name through the blood. But I am yet to see these same people volunteer any other extra time they seem to have to help this community, not there to help stuff eggs, which we did for hours upon end, not there to donate money to help for community projects, not there to help hide eggs for the children of this community, and not there to help clean up afterwards. What possible things have you done for this community that you can claim to care so much about? So maybe instead of taking every waking minute and every waking hour of yourself and other people's time to destroy someone, you should take the time to meet him, see what his plan is, his vision for this community that he chose to come back to. Maybe meet some of the incredible officers that he has hired and find out about cases that have been closed and solved. There are so many great things happening in this community that you are missing, you are missing all of it, and just constantly going over the negative. And as far as the integrity of Chief Littleton, do you not see what all he has faced since returning to Perry Township? He has had his life put on display, much of it twisted into things that they were not. He has been attacked from all angles and still comes every day to protect these same people. He has held his head high and continued to grow as a great chief officer and a man. So post away, he has an incredible support system from home, his family, and his great community. And I have the ORCs if anybody would like to see them, and I have the entire list with pictures of all the officers that have been killed in the line of duty as of this year
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of myself, I appreciate that.
I do.
If anyone that supports this gentleman, like Kristin said, should stand and give him a round of applause.
Let's see if he's...
Now, he was scared because he had no idea what I came to say.
That's true.
One of the important things is, the man that put this on social media was warned about it once before.
Correct.
And he did it again, and he gives me God bumps when we get my hands on him. I'm telling you, this is really a violation of that man's privacy, and anybody that would do that is worthless in my point of view.
It bothers me, and it's...
I have brothers...
It bothers him for your safety, of your family.
Absolutely, and your children.
And your children.
He bought me a shotgun for Valentine's Day to protect our home.
Good for you.
Good.
I hope it's a double barrel.
Some people say they haven't chose to go that way, probably come to my house and see how it works out. Probably come to my house and see how it works out. I chose to go that way at home.
We're just, you know, it's just, we think you're a world of you, we think you're doing a heck of a job.
Anybody that's community-oriented...
Yes.
And loves the community they live in would never, ever do this. Never.
I'm not raining on your parade.
Is that right?
But let me explain something to you. There are people every day, I did it for twenty-two and a half years in the United States, because I strapped a B-52 to my ass and took off with nuclear weapons. Okay? I had the capability in my hand, because I had to give consent for nuclear weapons to be dispensed. I had the capability in my hand to kill millions of people in defense of our country. This man is defending our country.
That's right. At a different level, but absolutely, and I thank you.
It's in defense of our country. You go around and you see, this one says NRA, you go around and you see the number of veterans hats.
Yep.
And when I say veteran, I mean military, police, first responders, those are people that have served their country. Yes, I was reassured.
And I believe this man's done that also.
He has, he's a non-veteran.
That's what I'm trying to say. That's why I said I'm not raining on your parade. I'm just expanding your parade to include more people, because he's working for us, he's protecting us. And to the best of my knowledge, that's what I did, because our hope was that we would never take off in time of war, because our family would be sitting in a three-and-a-half-mile smoking crater. Okay? If you don't understand that I'm serious about that, please rewind, because I'm serious. He puts his life on the line. You only do that once. You can show up to multiple scenes, but you've got one life, and that's it. And I appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll listen to you. I make a worship to Richard.
Wait a minute, do we have any more visitors who'd like to speak?
Thank you. I also think you could be a great team put together. Really do. Tina likes to think so.
I will, I will just put in a compliment for Tina. She done an awesome...
Yes, she did.
Absolutely.
Identity theft meeting. I was there, and it's a shame everybody wasn't at that. Well, I mean, I know you can't always pimp certain thing, but it was, it was great.
I said it before and I'll say it again, we are gonna have East Dollar Police Force in southwest Ohio. I believe it. We've got all the personnel and the material and everything, and it's gonna be a really good thing for our community.
For those of you guys that work here for the identity theft meeting, anything that you guys would want presentations on, because the chief had me announce it then, and I'm announcing it here at this one, send us something. If one of us can't do the presentation, I've got enough networking so that we can get somebody in that can do it. But rather than pull stuff out of the air, we would rather give presentations on what the community wants and would like to see.
Can we make a motion for Chief Littleton to move ahead with Spectrum for the internet? Can we do that?
Yeah, because I believe, I believe we can, because if the grant does come through, it will be retroactive. So, let's go ahead with that.
Yes, please. I'll make a motion for Chief Littleton to contact Spectrum.
And move forward with that.
And move forward, yes.
I'll second that.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
What?
Hit him.
So, you...
I'll make a motion to Richard.
Say.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Is that for anyone?
No, I got, I got three.
I know, there's a little time.
Is anybody else nervous that all the motions for a general I sent to them?
Can you notice I'm getting antsy just sitting on my feet?
I need a big enough hand.